Here this morning, I want the record to reflect that all five of the members of the Board of Supervisors are present legally giving us the cover to call this an official meeting. So with all five being in chambers, I'm going to proceed. I'm going to see if our C A O doesn't mind leading us in that pledge this morning.
Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and ask if folks on the dice can do introductions. I'm going to start to my right and go with Supervisor Alejo.
Yes Supervisor, Supervisor Luis Alejo, I represent District One, which includes most of the city limits of Salinas.
Glenn Church Supervisor District Two, which covers North Salinas all the way to North County to Aroma San Pajaro.
I'm Kate Daniels Supervisor for the Fifth District and my district includes the incorporated jurisdictions of Carmel by the Sea, Pacific Grove, the city of Monterey, and then unincorporated the entire coast from the San Luis Obispo County border up along the coast and includes Carmel Valley and the Highway 68 corridor and parts of River Road.
I'm Susan Blitch County Council.
I'm Wendy Rude Askew District Four County Supervisor, honored to represent the five incorporated cities of San City, Del Ray Oaks, Marina, Seaside, and a good section of South Salinas, as well as the unincorporated communities of East Garrison and CS U M B and most of the former Ford yard.
Sonia De La Rosa, I'm the county administrative officer and I work with the entire county along with county council.
Dominic Dursa District Director for Speaker Robert Rivas.
Hi there. Pauline Oinuma Deputy State Director for Senator Adam Schiff.
And then on Zoom, I believe Chad Powell's with us. Chad, if you'd introduce yourself.
I thought Chad Powell Policy Advisor for Congresswoman Lockhart. Thanks for having me.
Chad, and then I don't know, has Margaret from Senator Padilla's office joined us yet? Okay. Well, we'll recognize that with us today will be Congressman Jimmy Panetta as well, who will join us shortly, as well as Senator Laird and Assemblymember Don Addis. And with that, I want to thank all of our legislators for taking time today and their staff for to be with us to learn a little bit about the issues that are impacting residents here in Monterey County on the ground through the county lens. I also want to acknowledge that with us today, we have some mayors. I see Mayor Scott Donaldson from Del Ray Oaks. I see Mayor Dale Byrne from the city of Carmel by the Sea, as well as Chip, the city manager. Thanks for being here with us. I know online, we have Mayor Mike Labarre from the city of King. Thank you, Mayor Labarre, for joining us this morning. Did I miss any of the mayors? I think I got them all that are with us. Okay, perfect. Then we'll proceed. At this time, I'd also like to thank the public for joining us. I know the issues that we discuss here, it's an opportunity to get the issues that matter to you out in front of every single one of those folks that represent you from the state, local, and federal level. To have your voice heard on all these planes at one time is a unique opportunity. So we want to thank you for joining us and look forward to the interactions that we're going to have today. And with that, I would like to welcome Nick Chulos to the front of the room to make some introductions to the legislative team.
Gotcha. You'll have to bear with me, my voice. I've got whatever's been going around. So we're very happy to be here before you today for this legislative workshop. The team that we have, Annette Di Adamo is our Legislative Program Manager, and I believe Annette is on the line here. She's organized this entire meeting today along with the Legislative Committee. And I want to thank Ashley Walker from Nosman Associates, who is also on the line, and Maria Triplar from Ballard Spar, who's our Washington DC lobbyist. Ashley works for us in Sacramento, and they work very hard on our legislative program. Really appreciate that. As well as the Legislative Committee. I'd like to thank the Legislative Committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also want to acknowledge Kasha Hunt, who's also with Nosman, and Caitlin Cogle, who's with Ballard Spar. Thank you for joining us and for the work you do year round to make sure that our issues get in front of the right folks at the right time. And with that, talking about being in front of the right people at the right time, I want to turn it over to the Chair of our Legislative Committee Supervisor Alejo to take us through a review of the agenda and objectives for today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And first of all, we want to thank all our staff from our legislative offices and our legislators that took the time out of their busy schedules to join us today. I know some are adding on. I think we also reached out to Abigail Solis of the Governor's Office, who covers the central coast. But everyone, thank you for joining us today. This is our time of the year, at the beginning of each legislative session, each budget term, that we have a chance to get on the same page essentially with our legislators for priorities and goals for the coming year. And I think this is our sixth year that we've done this already. And I think we are the only county that does this in the Monterey Bay area. But we do have a very robust legislative program with the staff that were just mentioned. We work very closely throughout the entire year on our priorities, but also working closely with the priorities of our legislators. We learned long ago that we're only effective in local government if we work with our local partners, but more importantly, working very closely with our federal and state legislators. So the Super Bowl is this Sunday. So this is essentially our huddle with the quarterback right before the big play. And so I want to thank our legislators and their staff for being part of the coordination with all of us. So today, it's our opportunity to hear, we focus only on these main priorities. We know we're short on time, the main priorities, but also talk about how we could work on together on issues throughout the year and also support the legislative priorities that they're working on in Washington and in Sacramento. So today, we're going to be able to hear from the state of our county, as well, we're going to get a presentation on our county priorities from our staff. We're going to get comments from our state and federal legislators, which we definitely, we want to hear, and our public wants to hear on some of their priorities for the coming year. And also, at the end, also hear comments from all our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors. And then we hope to have some time for a roundtable discussion as well. We just want to remind our presenters from our county side to try to keep our comments brief because we want to leave as much time as possible to hear from our legislators and also to have that discussion as well. So with that, I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo. I do want to acknowledge that I was remiss in not acknowledging that we have interpretation available. I'm wondering if the interpreter via Zoom wouldn't mind sharing their announcement with us, so those folks who may need their services are aware that they're available.
Thank you Chair Lopez. Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Diego Celis y seré su intérprete en español para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario público y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor de hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle antes de seguir adelante. Muchas gracias.
I said Diego, with that, we're going to go to our C A O, De La Rosa, for State of the County.
In the interest of keeping our remarks brief, I'll touch on a couple of things and then I'll send it back over to Supervisor Lopez. Thank you first for all of your support from our legislative team and also those state and federal legislators that work with us and the local community as well to identify issues that we need to address and need their support in carrying forward. 2025 marks my third year here with the County of Monterey, and we are three for three when it comes to emergencies in January and during the course of the year. So we have gotten to know our legislators quite well, and they are usually the first calls that we receive when we're in the middle of an emergency response. We have a dedicated team of emergency operations individuals, including through our Department of Emergency Management, but most importantly, within our communities. Many of the cities represented in Monterey County are part of that Emergency Operations Center. Regardless of the event, they want to remain informed. They want to communicate with the members of our community and ensure that they receive information timely. So for that, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for helping us send messages and continue sending messages to the community. We are still working on the latest emergency and have continued to share information. Any questions that you have, please do not hesitate to reach out. We have a very strong public information team that helps disseminate information. Last year, the Board revised and adopted strategic goals. And I just want to mention them now because a lot of the work that's done by the county is in furtherance of those goals. And we're going to be working on key objectives that we've identified as part of the team, both elected officials and department heads. These strategic goals are encompassed within well-being and quality of life, sustainable infrastructure now and in the future, safe and resilient communities, diverse and thriving economy, dynamic organization, and employer of choice. In these times when we have new administration, there's a lot of uncertainty, in particular in our community with the number of individuals that are here as immigrants, as agriculture workers, as hospitality workers, and a lot of different industries. And through our ad hoc on immigration, we're disseminating information and informing people of their rights and giving them resources so that they could seek additional help if that's what they need. That ad hoc is led by Supervisor Alejo and Supervisor Lopez. And coming soon to a town near you, Salinas, Greenfield, Pajaro, and Seaside will be hosting a forum to add additional information to your communities. We have videos that have been posted online by our Public Information Officer. Please view them. They're in different languages. In this community, we have individuals that not only speak Spanish, but they either speak Triki or they speak some version of Misteco or other languages. And we have listed videos that are in those different languages. We've also ordered cards in those different languages to distribute. And our county is dedicated to ensure that we are communicating with individuals in the language that they speak and the language that they're most comfortable in. And we're going to continue doing that again and trying to ensure that everybody in this community feels safe and they have the information that they need. In addition to that, we are focused on our staff. We want to remain competitive. And we are in the process of implementing base wage studies. And we anticipate this will be in form of a phased implementation of gymnastics of sorts to ensure that our folks are being paid their appropriate wage, but also able to live in the same community that they serve. We will continue to work on external communication, and we certainly want your feedback. Please let us know if we could do better in any of our ways that we communicate with you. We are here with the mission of serving those that are in our community and those that come and visit our community. We continue again to have strong collaborations with our cities, not just in Monterey County, but within the region, San Benito and also Santa Cruz. And this most recent event impacted those counties as well. And we are working together in a joint information center to ensure that information gets to those various communities. I also want to mention that this year, 2025, we celebrate 175 years as a county. And just looking at the number of population that has grown throughout the years, I mean, we went from a population of 3,000 within the community to a population of over 400,000 that we are today, just in the county of Monterey. And it's important to remember, a lot of us that grew up in these communities are still here or planning to make our way back, or we have families that are still within these communities. And many of us still speak our original language. And so having these resources is important, not only for myself as a C A O, but also for the families that we all came from. Lastly, I want to share that with the help of our community, there was a measure that was passed, and it was spearheaded by Supervisor Askew and also Supervisor Church, and with a lot of support from our county administrative office and county council.
I'm Pauline Oinuma Deputy State Director for Senator Adam Schiff.
And then on Zoom, I believe Chad Powell's with us. Chad, if you'd introduce yourself.
I thought Chad Powell Policy Advisor for Congresswoman Lockhart. Thanks for having me.
Chad, and then I don't know, has Margaret from Senator Padilla's office joined us yet? Okay. Well, we'll recognize that with us today will be Congressman Jimmy Panetta as well, who will join us shortly, as well as Senator Laird and Assemblymember Don Addis. And with that, I want to thank all of our legislators for taking time today and their staff for to be with us to learn a little bit about the issues that are impacting residents here in Monterey County on the ground through the county lens. I also want to acknowledge that with us today, we have some mayors. I see Mayor Scott Donaldson from Del Ray Oaks. I see Mayor Dale Byrne from the city of Carmel by the Sea, as well as Chip, the city manager. Thanks for being here with us. I know online, we have Mayor Mike Labarre from the city of King. Thank you, Mayor Labarre, for joining us this morning. Did I miss any of the mayors? I think I got them all that are with us. Okay, perfect. Then we'll proceed. At this time, I'd also like to thank the public for joining us. I know the issues that we discuss here, it's an opportunity to get the issues that matter to you out in front of every single one of those folks that represent you from the state, local, and federal level. To have your voice heard on all these planes at one time is a unique opportunity. So we want to thank you for joining us and look forward to the interactions that we're going to have today. And with that, I would like to welcome Nick Chulos to the front of the room to make some introductions to the legislative team.
Gotcha. You'll have to bear with me, my voice. I've got whatever's been going around. So we're very happy to be here before you today for this legislative workshop. The team that we have, Annette Di Adamo is our Legislative Program Manager, and I believe Annette is on the line here. She's organized this entire meeting today along with the Legislative Committee. And I want to thank Ashley Walker from Nosman Associates, who is also on the line, and Maria Triplar from Ballard Spar, who's our Washington DC lobbyist. Ashley works for us in Sacramento, and they work very hard on our legislative program. Really appreciate that. As well as the Legislative Committee. I'd like to thank the Legislative Committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also want to acknowledge Kasha Hunt, who's also with Nosman, and Caitlin Cogle, who's with Ballard Spar. Thank you for joining us and for the work you do year round to make sure that our issues get in front of the right folks at the right time. And with that, talking about being in front of the right people at the right time, I want to turn it over to the Chair of our Legislative Committee Supervisor Alejo to take us through a review of the agenda and objectives for today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And first of all, we want to thank all our staff from our legislative offices and our legislators that took the time out of their busy schedules to join us today. I know some are adding on. I think we also reached out to Abigail Solis of the Governor's Office, who covers the central coast. But everyone, thank you for joining us today. This is our time of the year, at the beginning of each legislative session, each budget term, that we have a chance to get on the same page essentially with our legislators for priorities and goals for the coming year. And I think this is our sixth year that we've done this already. And I think we are the only county that does this in the Monterey Bay area. But we do have a very robust legislative program with the staff that were just mentioned. We work very closely throughout the entire year on our priorities, but also working closely with the priorities of our legislators. We learned long ago that we're only effective in local government if we work with our local partners, but more importantly, working very closely with our federal and state legislators. So the Super Bowl is this Sunday. So this is essentially our huddle with the quarterback right before the big play. And so I want to thank our legislators and their staff for being part of the coordination with all of us. So today, it's our opportunity to hear, we focus only on these main priorities. We know we're short on time, the main priorities, but also talk about how we could work on it together on issues throughout the year and also support the legislative priorities that they're working on in Washington and in Sacramento. So today, we're going to be able to hear from the state of our county as well. We're going to get a presentation on our county priorities from our staff. We're going to get comments from our state and federal legislators, which we definitely, we want to hear and our public wants to hear on some of their priorities for the coming year. And also, at the end, also hear comments from all our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors. And then we hope to have some time for a roundtable discussion as well. We just want to remind our presenters from our county side to try to keep our comments brief because we want to leave as much time as possible to hear from our legislators and also to have that discussion as well. So with that, I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo. I do want to acknowledge that I was remiss in not acknowledging that we have interpretation available. I'm wondering if the interpreter via Zoom wouldn't mind sharing their announcement with us, so those folks who may need their services are aware that they're available.
Thank you Chair Lopez. Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Diego Celis y seré su intérprete en español para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario público y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor de hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle antes de seguir adelante. Muchas gracias.
I said Diego, with that, we're going to go to our C A O, De La Rosa, for State of the County.
In the interest of keeping our remarks brief, I'll touch on a couple of things and then I'll send it back over to Supervisor Lopez. Thank you first for all of your support from our legislative team and also those state and federal legislators that work with us and the local community as well to identify issues that we need to address and need their support in carrying forward. 2025 marks my third year here with the County of Monterey, and we are three for three when it comes to emergencies in January and during the course of the year. So we have gotten to know our legislators quite well, and they are usually the first calls that we receive when we're in the middle of an emergency response. We have a dedicated team of emergency operations individuals, including through our Department of Emergency Management, but most importantly, within our communities. Many of the cities represented in Monterey County are part of that Emergency Operations Center. Regardless of the event, they want to remain informed. They want to communicate with the members of our community and ensure that they receive information timely. So for that, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for helping us send messages and continue sending messages to the community. We are still working on the latest emergency and have continued to share information. Any questions that you have, please do not hesitate to reach out. We have a very strong public information team that helps disseminate information. Last year, the Board revised and adopted strategic goals. And I just want to mention them now because a lot of the work that's done by the county is in furtherance of those goals. And we're going to be working on key objectives that we've identified as part of the team, both elected officials and department heads. These strategic goals are encompassed within well-being and quality of life, sustainable infrastructure now and in the future, safe and resilient communities, diverse and thriving economy, dynamic organization, and employer of support from our county administrative office and county council and many folks within our community. And that measure is Measure AA. The most important piece of that measure is that the funds that come in as part of this 1% sales tax will be used to fund projects and services within the unincorporated areas of the county. And with those things that were, those items that were identified as the priorities include road repair and infrastructure projects, water and sewer infrastructure projects, parks projects, essential mandated county services such as improvements to housing affordability, to reduction of homelessness and healthcare services, and emergency management and response activities, including disaster response, animal services, and emergency communications. So with that, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your continued support. And we look forward to doing so many more things in this year and hope that we don't have four-for-four next year. Thank you.
Thank you, CAO Della Rosa. And I want to acknowledge that Congressman Jimmy Panetta has joined us via Zoom. So Congressman, thank you for joining us. We're going to go through our presentations here, and we'll get to your comments soon. But thank you for being on with us. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and see if we can get our county party presentations done here. And we're going to start with Randy Ishi, who will give us a presentation on the San Lucas clean drinking water issue that's been before us for about 14 years now.
We're not giving up hope on it.
We are not. This is our year.
Exactly.
And that we are not. We cannot emphasize that enough. And good morning, and thank you very much, Chair, members of the Board, honorable state and federal electeds. The community of San Lucas, a small disadvantaged primary community located in the South County of Monterey County, is now going into its 14th year since its first do-not-drink order, hence its 14th year of water insecurity. But what we want to highlight today is that progress is being made. By way of brief background, the county, the San Lucas Water District, in working conjunction with the State Water Resource Control Board, have been able to make some progress with regards to the nitrates and the issues surrounding the certain parties involved with leading to that point. Rather than delve too much into that, it's noteworthy that progress has been made on that front. But there still are other water issues in the community, as has been discussed in the past. What we wish to highlight is that the county is very, very grateful that since the last time we met, the county was awarded a federal fiscal year 24 federal community project funding request, AKA a federal earmark for this project, to the tune of almost $1 million. And that grant award is being administered through the United States Environmental Protection Agency for preliminary design and environmental review. Staff have been working through that process to actuate the grant and also start that preliminary design and environmental review effort. However, additional funding is still needed to complete the final design, any additional environmental assessments or permits that might be needed, and the construction work and the construction management to provide a proposed approximately 7.8 mile-long pipeline running approximately easterly on the east, in the northeasterly direction, on the east side of Highway 101 and the railroad line. And also, what's also important is that this pipeline project is estimated to have the lowest impact on the community's water rates long-term compared to the other project alternatives identified. Hence, this pipeline project is crucial for the community. As a final point of the need of the pipeline, the lack of water has also caused a nearly 20-year delay of a severely needed affordable housing project in the community of San Lucas. Thus, the county's request is to secure additional funding for this long-term project that will provide a reliable source of safe, clean drinking water to the small disadvantaged community of the people of San Lucas. Please do not forget about them. That is what we ask. And with that, I would like to hand the floor over to Mr. Ara Ajderian, the General Manager of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency. And we thank you very much for your audience today.
Thank you, Randy. Good morning, everyone. I'm here to speak about the Nausmeto and San Antonio dams and reservoirs safety projects. Currently, there's a lot of activity going on at both dams. We have been fortunate over the past two years with the support of Senator Laird, Speaker Rivas, Assemblymember Addus to secure a little north of $22 million of state grant funding. And so that is supporting our design and permitting and ultimate construction work from now through 2027. The agency continues to be aggressive in its pursuit of other state and federal funding opportunities. And while we do work independently in pursuing those grant applications, and we do engage directly with our state and federal elected representatives, we also coordinate closely with the county's Intergovernmental and Legislative Affairs Group. And so much appreciation to Annette and her team and the great work that they do, and appreciation to the Board of Supervisors for the recently approved Strategic Grant Services Program, as well as the state and federal appropriations requests, which we remain cautiously optimistic about. We also recognize the need for funding of the local share for these dam safety projects. The agency has begun working with our stakeholders to explore future financing options, and will be working with the county closely to revive the Monterey County Financing Authority in the pursuit of future funding support as we transition from design and planning into construction. Next slide, please. At San Antonio Dam, the spillway, of course, is the priority project. Recently, in late 2024, the Department of Water Resources Division Safety of Dams approved the agency's proposed spillway alternative, and also approved the extension of the deadline to replace the spillway until the end of 2031. Currently, we are reviewing a request from DSOD to revisit the probable maximum flood calculation. The twist in the road there is if we do update that, it will likely delay the design work by another six months. And so we're evaluating your request. At Nausmeto, next slide, please. We have completed the geotechnical survey of the rock outcrop, and this is the issue for the plunge pool rehabilitation. And we're beginning the design work to inform the rock removal and rehabilitation of the plunge pool. And so a lot of activity, and thanks in large part to the grants that we received over the past couple of years. And we continue to look forward to additional state and federal funding to support our future projects. And so that's a brief overview. I'm always available for any detailed questions that folks might have. That concludes my remarks for today. And I would like to introduce our interim Military and Veterans Affairs Officer, Jack Murphy.
Good morning, Chair Lopez, elected and appointed officials, and members of the Legislative Committee. I am Jack Murphy, as introduced, Director of the county's Military and Veterans Affairs Office. Thank you for the opportunity to advocate on behalf of the healthcare and housing needs of the Central Coast veteran community. California currently has 1.5 million veterans, down from 1.6 last year. So now we are the second-largest population in the country. Unfortunately, the state continues to see an exodus of veterans to more politically and tax-friendly states such as Texas and Florida. But nonetheless, here on the Central Coast, we have about 86,000 veterans. Many of these veterans are elderly. They're disabled Korea, Vietnam, and Gulf War-era veterans. They have acute medical needs, and their disability rates are significantly higher than the civilian population. At the same time, the region is very fortunate to have a rich military history. And with that, we've got multiple via medical facilities, starting with Via Palo Alto. And then we've got outpatient clinics in the Santa Cruz area, and then here in the Marina area as well. We also have robust healthcare infrastructure throughout the peninsula and Salinas and to the south, and some very valuable and important employment opportunities and community and social services. With all that, what's still missing from the area is a long-term healthcare and housing facility for elderly veterans and their spouses. What we're proposing is a continuation of our past year's proposals to have either a state or a federal veterans' home developed or established here in Monterey County, preferably on or near former Fort Ord, to provide that long-term healthcare and housing deficit. The enduring legislative proposal is a priority for the veteran community. Also, it's a priority for veteran-serving organizations to include the California Association of County Veteran Service Officers. We've also received support from pretty much every municipality within Monterey County, and also within the elected officials of our surrounding counties. Our request, again, is for this upcoming legislative session, that this proposal remain at the forefront of options in order to expand housing and long-term healthcare for the Central Coast veterans and their families. Ultimately, we would like to see legislative action to develop either a ninth veterans' home for the state of California, or a new community living center that would be maintained and operated by the Department of Veterans Affairs. The actual scope of the project has yet to be determined. We're working in collaboration with both CalVet and also representatives from the Department of Veterans Affairs. There are some notable federal funding options that we can leverage specifically to fund up to 65% of the development and operational costs, and that would significantly reduce the burden to California's taxpayers. Next slide. The following two slides just give some context. You know, the closest veterans' home to where we are here in the Monterey Bay area is up in Yountville, as depicted by Icon Number Eight. And the next closest one's in Fresno, depicted by Icon Number Three. There is nothing here in the immediate Central Coast area. These different CalVet homes vary by size and vary by the types of services they provide. And also, each one of them has a multi-year waitlist, with the exception of Barstow, which is depicted, I believe, by Number Four. Next slide. Just an overview of the demographics of California's veterans. Again, we've got 1.5 million veterans. You can see the breakdown across the multiple surrounding counties totaling a little over 86,000 veterans collectively. And I can't emphasize, again, the acute healthcare needs of the aging veteran population. They are receiving veteran benefits at an increased rate. So the mental health and physical health challenges of the veteran community continues to go up. And unfortunately, the housing costs also are going up, while the availability of long-term healthcare and housing for these veterans continues to drop precipitously. Thank you very much for your time and attention, and I look forward to any questions and collaborations. Thank you.
We'll go to CAO Della Rosa.
And I'll cover the next three slides. This is in protecting the Monterey County values. The County of Monterey has a long tradition of providing a welcoming, safe, and sustainable community. We are resolute in our commitment to preserving the values that define the community, and will rigorously advocate to protect and preserve them. As to immigrants, we oppose efforts that unfairly target documented and undocumented immigrants, including but not limited to separation of migrant families. Data privacy, we support an effort to protect data privacy for individuals who have provided personal information to any private or governmental institution. And we oppose efforts that will diminish public health initiatives, such as access to preventive healthcare services and vaccines. Next slide. For reproductive freedom, we support efforts to defend and protect reproductive freedom, including the right to access safe, legal abortion services. Marriage equality, we support and defend marriage equality as a constitutional right. We support efforts to continue to combat very real climate change impacts experienced in the county and throughout California, such as wildfires and winter storms. We oppose cuts to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, which have been critical, has been critical to partner with local communities to prepare for and recover from natural disasters. And we support efforts to preserve access to freedom of thought and expression as available through a variety of institutions such as libraries and museums. Next slide. We want to foster access to reliable and factual content from trusted news outlets, social media channels, and other information sources. And we oppose any efforts to limit or abolish the critical functions and protections provided by the U.S. Department of Education. We support rights of veterans and members of the military, including women who seek to serve in combat roles, LGBT and transgender populations. And we support efforts to enhance, grow, and protect national security assets in the Monterey Bay area and oppose base realignment closure.
For our next, for our last two items for presentation, we're going to go to Kelsey Scanlon.
Thank you so much for having me this afternoon. The Monterey County Department of Emergency Management has been working with our fellow departments within the county, as well as CALOES and FEMA, to actively pursue cost recovery through the FEMA Public Assistance Program. From the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic, the 2020 wildfires, the 2021 winter storms, the 2023 winter storms, and the 2024 winter storms, we remain extremely concerned about FEMA's interpretation of public assistance policy, any reduction in disaster reimbursement funding, or changes in how events may qualify for public assistance. The county, to date, has submitted millions of dollars to FEMA for public assistance reimbursement for eligible expenses. And the process for doing so remains at an extremely slow and cumbersome pace. Most of our claims take FEMA a considerable amount of time to review. We receive numerous and extremely burdensome and ineffective requests for information that slow the process. Oftentimes, we're requested, or we receive the same RFIs from multiple representatives of FEMA Region Nine, which is duplicative an effort and burdensome to the county. These times, as I have mentioned, are extremely slow. What is most frustrating for us is the lack of consistency in FEMA policy interpretation. Depending on which staff member we are interacting with, which changes about every 15 to 20 days, they tend to have a new or different interpretation of that policy, which tends to favor FEMA and not the local jurisdictions. At this juncture, the current strategy from the FEMA Region Nine...
Yeah, I think I would firm it up for a second.
Oh, hey, Chad, could you please mute yourself? Chad Harris?
I mean, it's...
Thank you. At this juncture, behavior from FEMA Region Nine is, could be qualified as bureaucratically malicious in their interpretation of FEMA public assistance policy. We continue to receive retroactive guidance in selectively interpreted public assistance policy which contradict direction we've received from FEMA and CALOES when conducting the operations mid-emergency. And to date, the county greatly appreciates the state of California, the state of California, for the $23 million advance that we've received, and continue to pay that back through the cost recovery process. Next slide. Of our $97 million eligible response expenditures, approximately 11 million have been obligated, with 46 to 80 million as a possible reimbursement. This is an extremely complex slide to unpack at this juncture, but we'll be presenting to the Board of Supervisors on February 25 with an in-depth presentation on where Monterey County's cost recovery efforts are at, and what challenges that we've been struggling with, and hope to receive additional support and guidance from the Board at that juncture. But I think the short of the long from this slide is that we have a very long way to go, and it is an uphill battle with FEMA to get some of these claims processed or even approved. Thank you. Oh, next slide. I'm sorry. I'm on the next one as well. One of our other greatest legislative initiatives at this juncture, as I am sure everyone is aware of, is related to the Moss Landing Lithium-Ion Battery Energy Storage Systems that are located in Moss Landing. These facilities began operating in December 2021. These facilities began operating in December 2022, and they house significant quantities of lithium ion battery packs that are managed by both Vistra Energy Corporation and Pacific Gas and Electric. Since these sites began operating, we have experienced several incidents on both sides of the property with Vistra as well as Pacific Gas and Electric, which have resulted in the deployment of local fire, the regional hazmat team, environmental health, law enforcement, US EPA, and activation of the Monterey County Emergency Operations Center. Most recently, we had a significant event at the Moss Landing facility which resulted in a full structure fire of Moss 300 in which 70% of the batteries and the structure were destroyed, creating a significant gloom in the air for several days, which resulted in evacuating 1,500 people for over 24 hours. The fire at this juncture is well-managed, but the site remains a hazardous site and will continue to remain a very hazardous site through the remediation process, which could take over a year. Did you, oh, utility scale battery usage at the residential level as well as the commercial level will continue to increase as the focus on renewable energy source demands intensifies. Next slide, please. While we greatly appreciate the added value of alternative energy and all the possibility that comes along with renewable energy and alternative energy sources such as best facilities, there are concerns that these new threats and hazards are unknown. We don't necessarily have regulatory authority over the facilities, and so as such, we're asking for your support in continuing our efforts for development of SB 38, reviewing AB 303. We seek your support in pursuing legislative and regulatory changes to support periodic evaluation of existing facilities with current safety and fire codes to align with technology changes. The county supports more robust engagement with local fire departments on existing or planned best facilities. The county is dedicated to supporting policies and funding for local emergency response and preparedness activities resulting from best hazardous threats to the surrounding community. We support new environmental health, public health, and fire safety regulations for best facilities as they develop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelsey. All right, so given the time constraints, what I have next on the agenda is the board each making some brief remarks, but I know that Congressman Panetta has got a very short timeline, so I'm going to jump to him first. Congressman, I know you're with us, I want to go ahead and give you the floor to give us an update.
Outstanding, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, and give me the thumbs up if you hear me.
We got you.
All right, outstanding, great. Good, eh, good afternoon, everybody. Well, what is it, morning for you guys? Good morning there, good afternoon here. I apologize for butting in, but I have to catch a plane so I can get on the same time zone as you, and I look forward to doing that. Let me start off by obviously acknowledging the chairman, the Board of Supes, the mayors that are there, as well as all of the staff for all of the excellent work that you are doing at the local level for the place that we call home there in Monterey County. More so that you are definitely, definitely a sight for sore eyes, and that obviously I wish I was there with you in person, but unfortunately, I've had to be back here dealing with all of the stuff, just leave it at that, that you are hearing about on the news. But the work that I've just heard that you are doing, the work that you will continue to do at a local level is crucial now more than ever. I cannot stress that enough. The work that you've done with dealing with the battery plant fire, the immigration and the resources that you are continuing to provide the most vulnerable part of our community, yet most valuable part of our community, and the work on housing, education, and obviously infrastructure, like I said, is something that's going to be needed now at the local level more than ever, considering what's going on or what's not going on at the federal level. But, just like we did before, when I first came into office back in 2017 and had four years of this type of administration, we're relying on you to come together, provide these types of resources where and when necessary, so like I said, we can continue to protect our most vulnerable and our most valuable there in Monterey County. Let me just kind of start off with addressing the elephant in the room, and that's obviously the environment that we are in right now here in Washington, D.C., and unfortunately affecting not just the United States, but our international relations as well. What we're seeing out of this administration is what has been called, and I think appropriately so, kind of muzzle velocity, or otherwise known as kind of flood the zone with these types of executive orders. And what we're feeling, what we're seeing, and what we're dealing with is that it sort of kind of puts everybody on their heels, and yes, that is on purpose. What we've seen before in the past Trump administration, and what we are seeing now, is that we must do everything possible to not let that happen, to get back on our feet and start moving forward. And I firmly believe that the way that we do that is by continuing to push back, by being targeted, by being disciplined, and by being firm, and not swinging at everything. I think a perfect example of that was my performance in last year's congressional baseball game. I went one for three because I swing at every damn pitch. And I think the year before, I went two for three. Why? Because I was more disciplined and more targeted and was able to see the ball clearer. That's what we have to do now with these types of executive orders. We are not going to respond to everything. If we do that, they win, in the sense that basically we will be off our game because it's just too much to do. But I think if we are targeted in what we look at and what we do, I think that gives us a better foundation to move forward, punch back and push back, and continue to go forward in stopping this administration from these destructive executive orders, and I'll get into that a little bit. And then second, let's just not get distracted. That's why it's so important to do what you do. It's why I told my staff on November 6th, basically, we have a job to serve our constituents there in the 19th Congressional District to make sure that we do not get distracted from doing that essential work of making sure that the federal government works for our constituents at the local level. Now, let me just kind of quickly go into the process of pushback, or at least how I've come to phrase it, in that I think what it comes down to is obviously we continue to do our job in introducing legislation, all right? Now, being in the minority party, it is very difficult to do so. That being said, the next step is litigation. Obviously, what we're seeing right now, and I'll get into that a little bit later, is obviously litigation filed by outside groups. Our attorneys general is actually working and doing its job in either stopping or putting a pause on some of these executive actions. Next is communication, making sure that we are talking and ensuring that you are hearing about everything that is going on, not just in Washington, D.C., but also in our federal courts. And then eventually, what it comes down to is mobilization, so that we can get back in power and, yes, start to legislate again. So once again, legislation, litigation, communication, and mobilization. Let me just move into the legislation that we're trying to do right now, or what you're going to hear about going forward. Obviously, the big issues now that we're going to be dealing with in the United States Congress, at least legislatively, mind you, is going to be dealing with the 2025 budget and the debt ceiling coming up here. We had a deal back in December, which unfortunately got blown up by the president-elect, and so we had to do a straight continuing resolution that put us out to March 14th. What you're going to see coming up to that date is hopefully negotiations to get a budget for 2025, but within that is the debt ceiling. Now, unfortunately, you have certain elements back here that want to tie in or leverage disaster relief for California in order to basically remove the debt ceiling and kick the debt ceiling outside of the next four years. I think that's absolutely despicable and absolutely un-American that anybody would leverage disaster relief for political gains, to be frank with you. And I think that is something that we are going to continue to push back on. The next piece of legislation you're going to hear is this reconciliation package. What is reconciliation? Look, reconciliation, first and foremost, means that in the Senate, you don't have to get 60, okay? That is kind of the key thing. When you hear reconciliation, just know that it's an easier way to get things through the Senate because it doesn't have to meet filibuster. That's provided once every year to the majority party to do that. Right now, considering that the Republicans have the House, have the Senate, have the White House, they're going to be pushing this massive piece of legislation under the reconciliation process that's going to be dealing mostly with the 2017 Tax Cuts and Jobs Act extensions. That was a bill that was put forward back in 2017 when the Republicans had the trifecta that I just talked about that really dealt with individual tax cuts and, yes, corporate tax cuts as well. But right now, that was permanent. These individual tax cuts are expiring. The one that's going to be important for us on Monterey County, there's a few, but let me just highlight one, and that's a state and local tax deduction. Obviously, that in order for a pay-for in the 2017 bill, that salt was capped at $10,000. You see Democrats and Republicans coming together on that to take that cap off, and you're going to see negotiations as to what that number will be, as to how much you conduct. Now, what you have to realize is that this is very, very complicated. And I want to talk about basically the politics that are surrounding this process. Like I said, you have the Republican majority in charge. They have the trifecta. So if they wanted to pass a budget, and if they wanted to remove the debt ceiling, they could. What I mean by that is that if they can't because of their politics, and if the government shuts down, that will be on them. Because it will be up to them to come to us to negotiate. And why? Because as we know, in the House of Representatives, you have a very slim and splintered majority, one-person majority, and very fractured politically, as we saw in the 118th Congress. And when they wanted to legislate, they had to negotiate with Democrats. That is what we are hoping that they do. In realizing that they are going to have a hard time doing anything on their own, so guess what? They actually are adults and get to legislate with us and negotiate with us, which I think is the right thing to do. Obviously, we're looking at that March 14th date when it comes to the potential for a government shutdown. That's why I hope they can come to us and negotiate with Democrats to get that budget and deal with the debt ceiling. And yes, then if there's something that's necessary, we have to have disaster relief for California. And then when it comes to reconciliation, when you talk about tax, when you talk about pay-for's for this type of cut, be it with tariffs or be it with cuts, and cuts to Medicaid and other important programs that are impactful and necessary throughout our country, once again, it gets very, very complicated. So I'm not really giving you optimism. I get it about what can happen coming up here on these very major and important bills, but know that you're going to be hearing a lot about them going forward. When you're not hearing about the executive orders, you're going to be hearing about these two pieces of legislation, when it comes to our budget, when it comes to reconciliation. Now, if it gets to a point where we can negotiate, where they realize they can't do it themselves, then I think we look at pieces of legislation that are going to be important for us. Immigration reform is very, very important. Obviously, this is something that I believe there is potential for a bipartisan agreement on. An agreement that includes, yes, more border security, yes, changes to our asylum system, but also making sure we protect those who are here, contributing in a law-abiding fashion to our communities and, yes, to our country, our Dreamers, our TPS recipients, our farm workers, and even healthcare workers as well. These are the types of discussions that are going on right now between myself, Democrats, Republicans, and basically making sure we start to lay the foundation, knowing that if we start to negotiate this very complex issue on immigration reform, that we at least have a framework to push it forward. In the meantime, though, in the meantime, we're going to continue to rely on litigation to push back on this administration. We saw it happen with the executive order on the birthright. And basically, it's going to be, come down to you, the resources that you provide at the local level to continue to protect those most vulnerable in our communities. It's why with your help and the other county's help, I put together a one-pager that you can find on my website that is basically a Know Your Resources guide that talks about what our office can do at the federal level, what state offices can do, what county offices can do, and what city offices can do for those who are here as immigrants. Another area that we're going to continue to focus on, I'm going to, which is very important for the 19th Congressional District, is affordable housing. If I get the opportunity to negotiate on these packages, I'm going to continue to push my More Homes on the Market, which doubles the capital gains tax exemption. I'm going to push for my Workforce Housing Tax Credit, which basically provides tax credits for the development of middle-income housing. And I'm going to push for First Time Home Buyer's Tax Credit of $15,000. Bring that back in. These are kind of the big, I know I don't have much time, and I know I've already gone over my time, and I know I got to get out of here, but I'm just telling you, these are some of the areas that we will continue to push. Let me just also briefly sum up this by reminding people about the system we live in. We live in an excellent system provided by our founding fathers of checks and balances. I cannot stress this enough, and I'm telling you this because each time I talk about this, people kind of go, oh, yeah, that's right, we do. And that's right. Look, first and foremost, the tip of the spear is Congress and the Senate. What do I mean by that? In the sense that if the controlling party wants to put forward an extreme piece of legislation, they're going to have to go through a very slim and a very splintered Congress, which is going to make it difficult. And then, yes, they have to go through the Senate. And despite what I heard from some people in my party about getting rid of the filibuster, the fact is that the filibuster is there for times like this, and they're going to have to get past that filibuster, which will be very difficult to do. So first check is Congress, House and Senate. Second check is our courts, and we're seeing them flex their muscles right now. What do I mean by that? Like I said earlier, birthright citizenship executive order, put a hold on that. Federal funding freeze, put a hold on that. Offer to resign with severance executive order, put a hold on that. Shutdown of USAID, you're going to see lawsuits filed, and there's going to be a hold on that. The invasion of privacy by Elon Musk into our personal information, you're not only going to see litigation, you're going to see legislation on that. You have to remind yourselves that we live in this system in which basically we can push back by ensuring that our system of checks and balances are there. Next level is our states, our attorneys general, who are filing these lawsuits, thank goodness, to ensure that they get in front of the federal courts. Then our cities and counties, Monterey County, to provide the resources where necessary in order to protect people as we get through these types of pushbacks that we're doing. And then, of course, it comes to all the people that are listening right now, our First Amendment rights, your voice, speaking up, getting out there, making sure that this administration hears what you have to say about how you feel about what's going on with these executive orders. In that, I just want to tell people, we are doing a telephone town hall on Monday night with the 19th Congressional District so big and stretched out from San Jose to Santa Cruz to Monterey to northern San Luis Obispo County. We found it a little bit easier and a little more resourceful to do a telephone town hall that we're going to be doing Monday night. We're going to be sending out an email on that. So, that's my update based on what's going on right now in Washington, D.C., what you're going to see about the budget and the debt ceiling, as well as this reconciliation package, what we're hoping to continue to do if we start to negotiate on immigration and housing. But in the meantime, we have to make sure that our system of checks and balances continues to be strong, continues to flex its muscles, and to me, that's how we get not just on our heels, that's how we go forward together. I look forward to catching a plane, I look forward to seeing you in the district, maybe briefly this weekend. Enjoy the Super Bowl on Sunday, and then I got to take my damn red eye back on Sunday night. Look forward to continuing to work with you, and again, thank you, thank you, thank you for holding down the fort and doing what's right for the people of Monterey County.
Thank you, Congressman. Thank you for all you're doing, and have a safe flight home. We look forward to seeing you here in district. I do want to acknowledge that Mayor Mary Ann Carbone has joined us from the City of Sand City. Thank you for being with us. I also see Councilmember Alexis Arizola from the City of Seaside. Thank you for being here today. And then lastly, I know that from the governor's office, Abigail Solis has joined us, and so I want to thank her for being on with us today. And with that, I'm going to go to my colleagues. I'm going to start at my far-right... I'm going to start at my far-right supervisor. I ask you to start, and we'll work back towards me with some brief comments.
Great, thank you. Well, I just want to, District 4 is in the House. We've got a couple mayors, and thank you all for joining us. So, let's see here. So this is sort of a different year than it has been when we've held these. And I appreciate the attention that we have and the opportunity to have this sort of direct communication with our state and federal delegation. I also just want to say thank you for the ongoing communication that we have. I know so many of my colleagues across the state and the country, when we meet, don't have the cell phone numbers directly to their state senators, their state assembly people, their federal congressmen. So it means a lot that you've made yourselves available to us in that way, and that as we have these disasters, or just in times of, you know, hey, we were at an event, and I sent you a picture because we took a picture, things like that, having that direct and back-and-forth communication has been so valuable and allowed us to keep you apprised of what's going on right here in Monterey County. So really appreciate that. In addition to some of the items that were presented in our legislative priority list this year, I'll just remind you, there's two more items that we've had in previous years on our list. But thank you, Assemblymember Addis, for funding the Marina Clinic that we're looking to expand. That project is moving forward. It's a Marina FQHC health clinic that will allow us to triple the number of Medi-Cal patients, Medicaid patients, who receive healthcare in the community where they live and work. So we're going to continue looking for funding to see that project through to reality. Also, in Seaside, we have the Social Services Building that the county owns. We are going to need additional support, funding that project, but that building currently is home to about 65 county employees and serves about half of the county in terms of providing eligibility benefits. And in Monterey County, where 60% of our residents rely on some form of public assistance, whether that be food assistance, welfare assistance, or healthcare benefits, having access to receive those benefits in a location that is dignified and clean and ADA accessible is critical and important. So continuing to work on that project will be my top priority in District 4. I also want to just comment that coming into this year, the anxiety in my community and among my residents is so significant and so great when it comes to anxiety about their most basic needs and access to being able to continue to receive those most basic needs. That is fundamental to sort of every conversation that I've had over the past weeks. It's around, will my Medi-Cal benefits continue? Will that program be defunded? Will the food that my mom receives through the food delivery, Meals on Wheels, continue to be funded? Will the Veterans Affairs programming be continued? Will I continue to receive my benefits? Will the safety net programs and EPA assistance for clean air and clean water, can I count on that to be something that I rely on here in this country that we live in? And then significantly for both our immigrant population that is undocumented, as well as all of those who may look or speak a language that puts them in a category that they feel is at risk. We had half of our kids missing from school earlier this week. And the schools are losing dollars, yes, but our children are not at school learning. Parents have anxiety through the roof, and that's not a way that we can continue to function. So that level of anxiety in our community is people are not shopping, kids are not going to school. That is not a sustainable way for us to continue to operate. And there's only so much that we can do here as a local county to fill those gaps. We're doing everything we can, and we'll continue to do everything we can to keep our residents safe. One final comment I just need to make to that point, and I hope we can continue to prioritize and focus on this. But our LGBTQ community effectively, for many of our transgender members, has an effective travel ban in place. For all of members who have a gender marker that is designated with an X, like, it's an effective travel ban at this point. And so we have so many things that are happening, and I appreciate that there's a level of intended chaos, and that we have to stay focused on working through our processes that are in place. But for people who are impacted directly, their lives are on hold right now. And so the urgency that exists has never been more urgent. So thank you for your work, and we look forward to continue working with you. Thanks.
We got three minutes. So first of all, thank you, Senator Laird, thank you, Selena Maradis, thank you for Congressman Panetta, and I know our Speaker is going to be joining us soon. But I do want to acknowledge all the staff, because as a former legislative staffer, I know they do a lot of the work behind the scenes. And they're not only here today, but every month that we have a legislative committee, they are with us, and they give reports from all your offices. So they are representing you very well. I do want to acknowledge Annette DiAdamo, Ashley Walker, Maria Tripler, because they help us amplify the voices of the residents of Monterey County in Sacramento and in Washington on our priorities and on important bills and budget items. So thank you for being here. I just wanted to use my time to, first of all, just mention two things. Obviously, the Veterans Home, and we pivoted to the Community Learning Center as Living Center as another option, is important for our aging veterans in our county. Something dear to me, as my father was Vietnam, era veteran of the United States Army, and I've been, I went, I lived with him, what he dealt with towards the end of his life. So it's something that I know is needed for so many families who went through what my family went through. Secondly, obviously, nothing stops a bullet like positive recreational programs for our youth. Salinas, in the past, has dealt with violence, thank God, because of all the efforts from our schools and our athletic programs and many other resources, probation. We have been able to decline violence and crime in Salinas compared to where we were just 10 years ago. But we have very proactive efforts, such as at our Salinas Soccer Complex, that are providing more opportunities. Built out Phase 2, we're constructing Phase 3, we're trying to get a skate park and BMX pump track, because we deeply believe in investing in our youth, keeping them focused on positive alternative recreational activities is healthy. Their families are there supporting them. And so in the past, we've had state and federal earmark efforts for those efforts. So I just wanted to mention that as an important part of my district and my community. But the remainder of my time, I just wanted to say, nothing is more important than how we look after the most vulnerable, our immigrant communities. And it's been tremendous to see law enforcement, our sheriff, agriculture, hospitality. Yesterday, all the hospitals in the county and the school districts have come out in strong support of our immigrant community. Just a few years ago, we were calling them essential workers and heroes for helping our nation through the hardest of times. And today, they are being attacked and scapegoated by those in the highest office in Washington. So I just wanted to mention, I couldn't be more proud of all the people that have come together. We're the first county to put up a comprehensive Know Your Rights website in six different languages for the Know Your Rights video, English, Spanish, three different versions of Misteco, Tariq, the most popular indigenous languages in our county. And we already got 40, 60,000 red cards out distributing in our community. Noa County has done that. But I just want to say, our county is 29% foreign-born. We're just behind LA at 33%, Imperial's 31%. But the last study on the question, how many undocumented do we have, was done by PPIC in 2011. Monterey County was lumped with San Benito County as the highest percentage of undocumented at 13.5%, higher than LA, higher than Imperial County. So this is something that is clear, close, and dear to us. We know that these are our residents, they are the backbone of our economy, especially in agriculture and hospitality. So I just want to thank our legislators for recently passing the money for the legal defense, for Rob Bonta to defend our residents. Second, which our ad hoc committee strongly supported, and I think we're the first county to send a support letter, for the resources for legal services and for removal defense. We agree excluding those with serious felons and violent crimes. But thank you for that, because that's going to come down to our communities and help us do more. And lastly, on the federal level, comprehensive immigration reform, or at the minimum, the Dream Act for the Dreamers. On 60 Minutes, President Trump said he would agree, he would be open and agreeable to that. So that is something that is real, to get done once and for all. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, Supervisor Lejo. We're going to go to Supervisor Church.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to start just to thank our legislators and everybody, elected officials and members of the public for coming here today. It's important to have this review. I also want to just thank Congressman Panetta for bringing up the issue of housing. It's a broad issue. It's obviously something that this county is interested in. It's, you know, as any issue comes up, we're going to be targeting on that, anything we can do for affordable housing, to improve housing. This agenda we have here, this legislative agenda, is really an evolving document. And it goes from old issues such as San Lucas, which, whether it's 100 people or 10,000 people, to go this many years without basic needs such as water is just something that shouldn't happen. And I'm hoping this is the last time that we see this on our agenda. Then we also have new issues come up, such as the issue happened in Moss Landing with the industrial accident that led to a fire and fallout that is still really undetermined in impact potentially upon the community. So obviously, in something like this, safety is the main concern. It's a new technology, it's evolving technology, it's essential technology as we move forward into the coming years, as we move to renewable society. But it's also very, you know, important that we also be able to distribute reliable and adequate information to our residents on issues like this that can come up, so they can make informed decisions on what happens in their community. It's a basic and essential need for not just this issue, but for any issue that involves public input. Wanted to, you know, could touch upon a whole range of issues on our agenda, from water into veterans. But I want to kind of focus on one little part and the core values, which has quite a few particular, important, and cherished individual rights inside of it. But there's one part in there which I think is not always necessarily brought up and discussed, and that's the point about combating misinformation. I mean, this really should be the role, not just of our government, but every government everywhere. The collapse of newspapers has left a void out there that's been filled by misinformation. Whether it is intentional or arises from ignorance, it is really a plague upon how democracy really is supposed to operate. There's just nothing much more essential than that. People need to be able to have information so they can make decisions about what happens in their communities, as I mentioned with the Moss Landing issue, but just upon all issues. This affects everything under here. You cannot have democracy surviving in the shadows of mistruths and deceptions. And unfortunately, with a limited amount of reliable information that is sometimes out there, that is what rises up. And that's something that we need to combat. I know as a county, we've been very, very strong on that with our PIO department, and it's something that just, you can't do enough. You just can't do enough. And then, not going to touch upon much anything else here, so because conserve some time, but I do want to just point out, I really look forward in the months ahead and the years ahead as how our agenda evolves and can serve our residents better. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Church. We're going to go to Supervisor Daniels.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to our legislators. It is so wonderful to see you all in this room, and Colleen, for coming all this way and being here in person. That is super awesome, plus for Senator Schiff. So thank you. It's really great to be here. And as most everyone knows in this room, I'm brand new, first time sitting on this dais for one of our legislative workshops. And so for me, you know, listening to all of the legislative priorities that our colleagues have outlined, 100% support. The idea that in San Lucas, it's been 14 years that folks have been on a no-drinking-water order, is unacceptable. And it also speaks, the same with the dams, that to some real vulnerabilities I think we're facing in Monterey County to our infrastructure. So it's not just, I think, dam safety repairs, they're critical, but they also make us vulnerable. And it would be the same thing I would say about our grid and our energy grid. We're here in this community and in this county, and we have longstanding power outages every time we have a storm. These are things, in addition to this list, that in District 5, I'm going to be spending some time focusing on. In addition, with climate change, we have flood safety projects that are critical. We have home hardening that is absolutely necessary to protect ourselves from the next wildfire. We have sea level rise challenges that we're facing, and we have challenges that have been identified today with new green energy infrastructure and how to ensure that it's as safe as possible for our communities. So I want to just also make an additional pitch for climate change and how much it is affecting our community. We are an area that has experienced not just catastrophic wildfires and catastrophic flooding, but now a catastrophic, you know, crisis at our local BASS facility. So we need help as we move into this next era. We need help with our infrastructure, and in particular, with things like our grid and our lakes and our dams to make sure that they are safe, for all of our safety. I also want to just agree with Congressman Panetta to please not get distracted. I live in a community, like so many in Monterey County, where the mothers of children that I went to school with are living in their cars in church parking lots. I'm living in a community where the housing costs have become so high, they are the highest in the nation. Rents are some of the highest in the nation. We have homelessness crisis in our schools that is just absolutely untenable. And so to please, when Washington, D.C. is spiraling out and chaos is raining, to not forget why we're all here, right? We're all here to help our communities and to get the resources that our communities need so we can be strong, we can be safe, and we can be sustainable. In terms of the calls today for comprehensive immigration reform, that's something we can all work on together. And I just want to share my colleagues' concerns, as I wrap up, with the way in which both documented and undocumented immigrants, who are literally the key, the backbone to our communities, to our industries, to our economy, are being scapegoated and are under extreme threat. It's a privilege to sit on a board who has identified priorities that include caring for our community in this way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Daniels. And in wrapping our portion of talking at our legislators and teams here, I really want to say thank you. I want to start by talking about some of the successes. Senator Laird, I owe you a giant debt of gratitude in terms of the work that you've done behind the scenes for San Lucas, which I know we're not all briefed in on the nuances and details yet, but I do believe this will be the last year. I think we're working towards that together, and I want to thank you for that work. Without you, we wouldn't be at the point that we're at now. So thank you so much for your work on that end, and to the Speaker's office as well. I also want to, something that's on our list but didn't get highlighted today that I want to touch on is the Farm Worker Resource Center. I want to thank the Speaker for making that down payment, to make that happen in the community of Greenfield. I think that work's going to move a little further forward this year with the Health Department, and I just want to thank you for making that initial investment and helping us move that needle forward. There's also water storage. You've heard it from me repeatedly, year after year, but I do know that we've moved the needle. We've given ourselves a bit of a runway as we get closer to some of those critical points as expectations from different state departments on meeting needs for safety. Where it's going to become a hotter button issue, and so we look forward to working with you, as we have in the past, to bring success on that front. I have to do this. I know Chad's online, and so Chad, Halone Road and the South of Salinas Project, I know they're key, and every time I'm back in D.C., I get that opportunity to speak with Zoe about those two projects. I just want to elevate those one more time in terms of a critical need for the communities in southern Monterey County. And lastly, I think something that I'm hearing is a common thread here is, there's a lot of programs that we need defended, right? Both at the state and federal level, but specifically on the federal level, as we're seeing a lot of targeted attacks on funding that our communities rely on. And it's everything from pieces within the farm bill to pieces that most folks have deemed as grants. And so as we move forward, I'm hoping that our board, as we give direction at the end of the day, can give direction to our staff to send out a letter to defend those streams of funds that are so crucial to us. And I know that that's something that I want to make sure we get in the hands of our federal folks as soon as possible, so that they have the backing of Monterey County as they go out and do their work on the ground. And so with that, stopping myself at two minutes, I'm going to turn it over, and I want to give Senator Laird the first opportunity here to share some thoughts with us.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to take your extra time. Let me just say that I was in this room for swearing-in day, and it seems like a million years ago, and we were a lot happier. And the world has changed nationally and locally in many ways since then, and so I just want to hold on to that day for a while. And I want to also acknowledge that the district And I want to also acknowledge that the district changed. And where we are sitting now has not been in the 17th Senate District, and it is. And I'm spending a lot more time here. I'm very happy that Marissa Hernandez has moved over from Senator Caballero's staff. And we hope to have a space here, after navigating the complex Senate process for dealing with those issues. I want to do this sort of lightning fast on a bunch of different topics. First, on the budget, we had our oversight hearing. And our real problem is, we don't know yet what the federal government is going to do. If they lob $20 or $30 billion of cuts at us, everything that you talked about on that list is going to be less realistic. And I chair the Education Budget Subcommittee. And the governor started with an almost 8% cut to UC and CSU, which with labor agreements and inflation is really 10, 11, and 12%, which hits home to families across this county, not just CSU Monterey Bay and Moss Landing with CSU. And it is my goal, and he's also cut scholarship programs, it's my goal to reverse those cuts. And so, we will be working on that along with the other individual items that you mentioned. On battery storage, I have an op ed that has appeared. I would just stand by that and add that I appreciated the board's action on Senate Bill 38 and tying it in. And the Public Utilities Commission is now formally going to monitor that process. But I really think that it wasn't really adhered to by the two installations in a way that it didn't come to this county directly on time. And it needs to. And you need, they need to involve everybody. You need to involve the public. And that needs to happen. And I am looking at a bill on lithium battery standards because they don't exist for safety. And it is not just battery storage. It is in neighborhoods. There was an incident in Los Angeles in a neighborhood with just car batteries that people were storing there. And so, the electrical workers and the firefighters are working with me. And I hope to have a proposal to deal with that. On San Lucas, just to mention what some of the machinations are, it's, I've engaged personally multiple times with an individual Public Utilities Commissioner, multiple times with the Chair of the State Water Board and the staff. I was engaging in the Regional EPA Director, and now that administration has changed, with the water company. And even had an unanticipated meeting with the responsible party. And I am trying to work with Supervisor Lopez in threading this needle. This needs to be done. But the bond measure that passed changed some of the wording. And we have a real shot at this. On the dam, that's where there's an item of concern because the slide did a great job of, you know, with Speaker Rivas's lead, we repurposed existing money. $3 million came out of the Department of Water Resources for planning. There's an application in for dam safety money because that process is happening. There was more dam safety money that was in Prop 4 that passed. And so, I feel like we are finally getting toward the state shares there. And my first thought on election night was, oh no, we're going to have trouble with the federal share for the dams. And I know that Supervisor, Congressmember Lofgren's representative is here. She's been unbelievably responsive. And there's still some shots there. But that's what we have to do to sort of, to land that deal. There was a summit that I convened on the Carmel River Water Order. And it is really my goal to see if that can be modified to at least allow for the affordable housing and other projects. I think there's a path there. The SERF project, I worked with a number of you that are either TMC commissioners or on the Transit Board. And we reversed the Coastal Commission's recommendation that is approved and funded and should move ahead. On the hospital funding situation, we had a confirmation hearing on Wednesday with the Health Secretary. And in public, I had an exchange with her on Monterey hospital costs. On the Office of Healthcare Affordability, they originally had this low target for Monterey to make hospitals really cut costs. And after a lot of engagement and effort, they revised their percentage to be where other hospitals are. But the Secretary committed to me, she chairs that board, that she will continue to work with Monterey County on those issues and try to make sure that whatever they do is tied to the actual situations here. Appreciate Supervisor Askew coming to the celebration of the Canister Recycling Bill, which we got passed last year. And there were a number of people that came out to REI, which will be one of the first receptacles when this kicks in for recycling. And then, on the dams, I was really disappointed that interest in San Luis Obispo County seemed to be communicating only through the courts. And so, I facilitated a meeting with the county supervisor there and Supervisor Lopez. I met individually with the Shandon San Juan Water Board. Understand, they have now engaged with your water director. And I suggested, since they will be needed on the dams, that there needs to be a relationship here that is not just through litigation. And that seems to be starting. So I'm grateful for that. And then, the last thing is on FEMA. I saw that, and I used the opportunity when the legislature was just considering the package because it wasn't just the very important money to do the lawsuits and to defend California on a lot of the issues. And I want to congratulate you on your value statement. I don't know that, I've been to a Board of Supervisors that it has a value statement before. And that one seemed to cover it really nicely on exactly what's going on now. But that package had added to it Los Angeles County Disaster Recovery. And while I strongly support it because of that catastrophe, I pointed out in the process that counties on the Central Coast still are owed a lot of money and did not have a state dollar advanced to them to try to deal with this the way that package did for Los Angeles. And that I hoped there was equity in how the state dealt with this. And I have had response from that. So I believe that point was heard. But we, Santa Cruz County is owed $100 million as well. And it's smaller than Monterey. I saw what Monterey has just owed. We have to make sure that is dealt with. So I just appreciate the individual engagement with every supervisor and with the staff. I know that Sonia and I lately have been burning the phone lines together. And on 10 minutes notice, I had the Director of the Department of Toxic Substance Control on the phone with her when something was happening. And I want to continue to play that role with whatever you need. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here today and look forward to all the continued work that we're going to do.
Thank you Senator. We're going to go to Assembly Member Don Adesiz next.
Well, thank you so much. It's wonderful to be here in person. Twice I've been on Zoom. So thank you for having me in person. And thank you Chair Lopez. And congratulations Supervisor Daniels. And good to see the entire board. And really do want to thank the staff for all the hard work and the public for coming out and zooming in. I am honored that the governor signed 18 of my bills in my first term. And one of those, incredibly importantly, came out of Monterey County. And that was AB 3233, the Local Environmental Choice and Safety Act that came out of Monterey residents whose, the will of the voters basically was overturned here when Monterey County passed Measure Z. And then, the California Supreme Court overturned that. And in the last 13 minutes of session last year, we were able to pass AB 3233. Senator Laird was floor jockey on that. We got that bill across. And now there are resurging efforts across California to be able to ban fracking or to make local decisions around oil and gas production. And so, we're seeing already, in the few months after that bill passed, that local voices, particularly of this county, are being uplifted again. And so I want to thank the residents here in Monterey County for standing with us, for bringing it forward, and for many of the supervisors who really spoke out. I have new committee assignments this year. And so I do want to say thank you to Speaker Rivas, who appointed me Chair of the Assembly Budget Subcommittee on Health. He's also appointed me as a member of the Budget Committee, a member of the Health Policy Committee, and very importantly, a member of the Insurance Policy Committee. We know how hard home insurance has become. And then I maintain my membership on the Education Committee. And I do want to say I was moved off Military and Veterans Affairs, but continue to be an advocate and was a co-author on the Ramos bill that has now turned into a budget ask to please not tax certain benefits for veterans. And so, want to be a good partner and have met numerous times with folks here in Monterey County on military and veterans issues and continue to make myself available. I'll touch on the Health Budget Sub just a little because healthcare was brought up. So the Health and Human Services Program has about $250 billion in the budget. Of that, $157 billion-ish is for Medi-Cal. And of that, the feds give 60% to 70% of the dollars to California. And so, when we are thinking about potential cuts, like Senator Laird mentioned, or protection, potential restriction on dollars from the federal administration, it becomes a very dangerous thing for the California budget overall. And so, as a Budget Subcommittee, we are thinking deeply about the 15 million people in California that receive Medi-Cal and what it would look like if the federal government were to make any changes. And I do want to say, you can't defund Medi-Cal by executive order. However, we are in defense mode in terms of thinking about how to make sure that people get the services that they need and that they deserve. And so, we've been meeting with local stakeholders. We did, and I want to thank Supervisor Askew for her advocacy around the Marina Health Clinic and the $1.5 million we were able to get in the past. But we, and we also, this Budget Sub oversees eight departments. Underneath part of that is the Office of Healthcare Affordability. And so, we will have hearings coming up, numerous hearings, coming up to look at the health budget and welcome your input as those hearing schedules are being published. And, you know, my perspective on this is that as we navigate the attacks on California's people and values, what we're doing is we are standing up for people of all gender identities, people of all documentation statuses, people who can become pregnant, and all others across the state and using our dollars to try to defend the rights of our folks here in California to access medical care, but also to dream big. We know we need to lower costs. We know we need healthcare for everyone. And we know we need that care to be high quality. And so, we're working on both in tandem. I'll touch briefly on my first two bills. Actually, my very first bill, AB 303, came again directly out of Monterey County with the battery energy storage safety situation here. And it's called the Battery Energy Storage Safety Act. My perspective on this really comes from, you know, my multiple visits to Moss Landing. I was there three times, talking with business owners, visiting the evacuation center, receiving hundreds, if not thousands, of inquiries around battery energy storage safety from across our entire state and also our nation. The world's, I would say, national eyes are on Monterey County right now in terms of battery energy storage safety. And we are getting conduct everywhere. I also toured the Emergency Operations Center here prior to this fire, which I'm glad that I did. And then I've been in conversations with the California Energy Commission, the California Public Utilities Commission, as well as the CAISO, the Independent System Operator, and sort of taking all of this information into account and talking with all of you. And what I really came down to is that we have to have community-centered climate action. I too wrote an op ed, and that was really what it focused on, and thinking about a three-pronged approach. So, investigation, accountability, updated emergency planning, super critical. And I want to thank Senator Laird for his work in terms of SB 38 that I was a co-author on and just his dogged approach to making sure that emergency planning is in place. Super critical. I also think, and this is what the bill is about, that restoring your local voice to the permitting process is critical for a couple reasons. One is I do think local communities need the ability to negotiate through the permitting process for the things that you need for your local community. It could be things in terms of fire safety. It could be things in terms of emergency preparedness equipment. There's a lot of pieces that happen through local permitting. And I think your voice should be there. The other part of this bill is appropriate citing requirements. We've all read the headlines around the Elkhorn Slough. And we don't want, you know, lithium, battery, heavy metals in our environmentally sensitive areas, bottom line, or a risk to human health and safety. And I'll just remind the public that safety risks exist with older facilities and newer facilities because lithium ion battery fires can't be put out with water. And so, that's why we need to think about citing issues. So, I invite, you know, I invite you to take a closer look. I hope that you will consider supporting that legislation. In terms of immigration, there's a few things. It was mentioned the $50 million that we just allotted to the DOJ as well as to legal services. In addition to that, we're working on legislation that would protect data privacy, particularly for DACA students at the K-12 as well as higher ed level. And then, our office has been showing up to community forums when invited to talk about protections at the state level. And we have a whole host of information on our website and invite the public to take a look at that. And I'll just touch on this briefly. My interaction around immigration comes out of a very personal experience of working with a resident in San Luis Obispo County who is facing deportation. And, you know, talking to the ICE Director there in San Luis Obispo County about what it was like for this parent of three American-born children and her child who, you know, was in high school and being a homeowner on the Central Coast. And what it would mean to that family to go through deportation proceedings. That eventually did take place. And the devastation to that family for that child whose mom was removed and, you know, to Mexico while that child was in school. So, I see this as an up-close and personal issue. It is about our economy. It is about our communities. But it's about individual families and the actions we have to take to protect the children in our community. So, I invite folks to check out our website or invite us to community forums. I'll also say the Central Coast Caucus that Senator Laird is a part of, a founding member and I chair, is putting together our ledge package right now. We are also looking at the potential of visiting the LA area for lessons learned around wildfire. That was brought up in this meeting as well. That was brought up in this meeting as well. And then finally, that, you know, we continue to hear from the public around EDD and around unemployment insurance. I think we have served 4,000 people across this district in my first term. And I'll tell you that just in the first week of January, I have four staffers here locally and district. In the first week of January, just one of our staffers brought in $100,000 of unemployment insurance money that they were able to unlock through the department. It's a huge issue out there that we hear about and we continue to work on day and night. And then finally, I know I said finally, but I'm going to say finally again, I want to say thank you to Congressman Panetta for working on the state and local tax credit. That is critical for this region and for coastal regions in general. Along with other colleagues in the Central Coast Caucus, last year, we advocated to the federal government to please take a new look at what's called the SALT. And so I want to thank the Congressman's Office for looking at that so that we can really bring our tax dollars here and have those tax credits that we need in our communities. So thank you to all of you. My first term started trial by flood. My second term has started trial by fire, but I do believe that we have an incredibly strong working team, both here and in the legislature, and I look forward to hearing from you more in the future.
Thank you, Assembly Member. We're going to go next to Colleen Oinuma, who is with U.S. Senator Adam Schiff's office.
Hi there, everyone. Well, thank you for the warm welcome to Monterey County. I've been on the Senator's staff for 14 years as when he was a member of Congress, and I am just a baby in the office, in our state office. The State Director has been with him since day one in the State Senate. So you have a very experienced team, you know, advocating for you and working with you on the issues that you care most about. This session has been incredibly insightful for me to learn more about your county and the priorities of the county. So thank you to all the staff and all the legislators that were involved in putting this together and putting forth your priorities. I will take this back to the Senator, and I know he will be very interested in, you know, what are the most pressing issues for the county? Where can we really dig in and help? The Senator has been in Monterey County quite a few times in the last few years, as I'm sure you are aware of, and I fully expect that to continue in the future. He has made it very clear to us as staff that he is the Senator for all Californians, whether or not they voted for him, and he will do everything that he can to make life better for all Californians. And as part of that, he is on, in the Senate, you get put on so many communities. So he is on Judiciary, Ag, it's Ag Nutrition, Forestry, Environment and Public Works, and Small Business and Entrepreneurship, and he sees this as a very valuable, you know, committee assignments to really address the pressing issues of Californians, both urban and rural, from the coastal communities to inland, mountains, Central Valley, far north, Imperial County. So we look forward to working with you. Please, you'll all have my contact information. Please don't hesitate to reach out to us if there is a federal issue that we can help with, even if it's not a federal issue. I'm sure the Senator will be happy to engage on it. If you have constituents who need assistance with federal agencies, our staff is here to help. We do a high volume of casework, as I'm sure our counterpart, Senator Padilla's office, does as well. And so we are happy to engage federal agencies on a very individual level for folks who need help with federal agencies. So whether that's FEMA assistance, immigration, IRS, the whole, any federal agency you can name, we can help them figure out a solution to their problem. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you again. I look forward to engaging with all of you. For everyone in the audience, would love to meet you and learn more about this community that is so vibrant. So thank you.
Thank you for making the trip all the way up from Los Angeles. Colleen, means a lot to have you in room with us, and so look forward to the Senator's leadership and welcome him to the team. All right. So with that, let's see if Margaret Arachiga has joined us from the office of Senator Alex Padilla. Margaret, if you're with us, raise your hand. All right. We'll come back and we'll go to Chad with, Chad Powell, with the office of Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren. Chad?
Thank you so much. I saw you'd think by year five of all of these being Zoom, I could unmute myself. But thank you for the opportunity. First, I want to say that Congresswoman, she can't join you in person like Mr. Panetta. She was in DC today for votes this morning. I'm going to keep what I say brief just out of respect of the timing that I know is getting tight and because there are so many issues we could discuss, but, you know, the Congresswoman has really enjoyed the partnership that we have had with local, county, state, and federal elected officials to address issues facing Monterey County communities. It's obviously been an eventful couple of weeks here in Washington, so a fun time to have these conversations. I won't repeat everything that Mr. Panetta said, but with everything going on, we want everyone to know that our doors are open. Zoe always says she'd rather hear something four times than not at all. As part of that, we've actually set up a web forum on our webpage so that folks who are, have been, or if it comes back again, will be impacted by any funding freezes can alert our offices. That's local agencies, elected officials, nonprofits who might have a grant. We know just how much chaos and concern that attempt last week caused in local communities. The Congresswoman's been speaking out, saying is illegal and unconstitutional and will harm the most vulnerable people. But we're continuing to be concerned about federal funding. I don't have time here to talk about everything that has been raised, but just a couple of the local priorities that staff presented on, just wanted to note a couple of things. First, the Congresswoman was really glad to see on San Lucas, her community project request was signed into law. We know that there will be further funding needs for that project, but, you know, very glad to see the progress that Randy reported and look forward to continuing to partner with the county, with Senator Laird and others on moving that project forward. As well regarding, you know, dam funding, we're continuing to meet regularly staff with Aura. I'm sure he is a little bit sick of getting my emails, so thank you, Aura, if you're still on. But to continue to work towards federal funding even as the broader picture is a little bit uncertain right now here in Washington. And finally, you know, we are here to help when issues with FEMA arise. You know, part of the challenge there is obviously going, as Congressman Panetta mentioned, going to be making sure that FEMA has adequate funding following the California wildfires because that's also necessary for the reimbursements that are pending for Monterey County local communities. So I'll stop there. There's a lot to discuss, you know, but I think the key point I would make is our door is always open. The Congresswoman, you know, knows that this is a challenging time for a lot of vulnerable communities and is standing up to protect them, but wants to continue to be able to, you know, work closely with the county, with, you know, local cities that I know some of the mayors are in attendance. Please continue to come with us, come to us whenever there are issues with the federal government. If you have constituents, just like my colleague with Mr. Schiff said, we are here to help them. We are here to help local governments or nonprofits as they are encountering challenges in these somewhat difficult times here in Washington. But our door is open. Please let us know how we can help. I really appreciate the opportunity to hear updates and hear about the county's priorities, and we're here to continue working with you. So thank you.
Thank you, Chad, and please thank the Congresswoman again for that first million for San Lucas. It was, I think, what helped open the spigot. Folks saw, well, if the feds are willing to invest, then we all better find a way to do so too. So thank her for us, and with that-
And here to help trying to get more, sir.
Thank you very much, Chad. And with that, we're going to go to Representative of our Speaker of the California Assembly, Robert Rivas. We have with us Dominic Dursa, District Director.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. Apologize for any raspiness. I was standing next to Nick Chullos in the background there earlier. Like Nick, his cough is robust, spreads fast. So it's an honor to be here on behalf of the Speaker today. You know, as Supervisor LaHose said, it's been six years of solid partnership across our federal, state, and county levels with both successes and continued work to be done. So first, he just wants to first recognize and thank the board for your dedication and leadership, for keeping our Central Coast residents safe during these turbulent times and fighting for accountability and answers as we continue to respond to the Vistra battery plant disaster. We're certainly grateful to first responders, emergency officials, and everyone who has been there to support residents and families through these difficult times. In Sacramento, there are always many priorities, but done more critical than addressing the cost of living here in California. On the first day of the new legislative session, Speaker Rivas urged his colleagues to look at everything they do via a lens of how it affects affordability here in our state of California. Will bills introduced put us on a path to building more affordable housing? Does it improve the everyday quality of life and stabilized prices? Can it lower total energy costs and deliver savings to families and workers? This is his North Star, and he expects legislation that puts affordability front and center. Secondly, housing. He has met with countless residents in our Central Coast community, from the very first town hall he hosted with Supervisor Lopez in Greenfield to places like Big Sur, Salinas, Morgan Hill, and across the state of California. And the message has been clear and resounding. People want more affordable housing. They want it now, and they want real solutions that substantially improve our housing crisis. Housing affordability is the civil rights struggle of our time, and his expectation is for his colleagues in Sacramento to deliver results. This started by delivering housing solutions right away this year, beginning in January, with a debut of a slate of bills that will bring about meaningful change, reducing delays in red tape, providing more clarity and certainty for home builders. It is a first step, and the Speaker certainly promises that we will protect our environment in our hard-fought, climate-forward building goals as we put California on a path to increased housing affordability. Last week, as his colleagues have mentioned and has been often discussed, legislation was passed to push back on hostile action from the White House and Republicans in Washington, DC. This was done because we must be prepared to protect our local businesses, our workers, our taxpayers, most importantly, our community, our families, from anything that jeopardizes this beautiful home that we call here on the Central Coast and throughout California. When attacks from Republicans in Washington threaten loans for small businesses, grants for schools, for medical research, funding for healthcare programs, veterans' assistance programs, we must be prepared, and California has now put aside resources for that response. The Legal Defense Fund passed last week is a small investment that will ensure big protections and savings for both our local and state communities in the face of continuing threats from this White House. We, of course, will continue to protect our law-abiding immigrant workers and families, especially here on the Central Coast. They are not only the backbone of our economy, both agriculture and tourism, but add a rich diversity to the very culture of here on the Central Coast, from Salinas to Monterey, Seaside, and throughout the state. They not only add to the culture, but they do, in fact, contribute billions to both local and state taxes. They contribute, again, billions to our state economy, and we will be there to protect those workers and those local businesses. The stakes are high again this year, but the Speaker and his colleagues are prepared in Sacramento to once again be there to collaborate with you, working together to get the job done. Because as was mentioned, projects have been done in these past six years. Though we still talk about the 14 years of San Lucas, we finally have been able to put aside the decades of inaction that occurred with Pajaro to where now we continue to work to finally seeing the levy done, and that required action from the federal, state, and local level, from the community. It required hundreds of millions. It has not just been those home run swings, but it's been the smaller actions, whether it be the Farm Worker Resource Center, whether it's been collaborative efforts such as the Immigrants Rights Forum, whether it's been the efforts to support immigrants to ensure that people were getting the shots they needed, the testing they needed during the COVID-19 pandemic. Monterey County has been a model of collaboration across the board, where have you seen local leaders, local business leaders, local stakeholders from across the board come together to simply say, we can and will do better. Our diversity is to be celebrated. So the Speaker encourages everyone to, of course, reach out to us as staff. You all have his information to reach out as him as well if you ever have questions on either his legislative priorities or the Assembly itself. And of course, his door always remains open to these conversations as the year continues. Once again, thank you, everybody, for the work done here today. Thank you to Annette. Thank you to Ashley, the supervisors, for the continued good work as we work to support the residents of Monterey County. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Dominic. Next on our agenda, we do have a roundtable discussion. I want to see if any of my colleagues have something they want to throw out before we go to public comment. Supervisor LaHose?
Yes, really quick. First of all, I want to acknowledge also Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia, who was in touch on Prop 4 and getting, looking out for San Lucas. I just want to acknowledge his work because he was pivotal on that as well. But just to, Senator Laird, I did share your op-ed piece because this is one that we will be watching closely. I think you point out the dilemma very well in your piece because here is California moving away from fossil fuels, moving into the, trying to enhance green energy throughout the state, and this technology has evolved a lot, as you rightly pointed out. Your op-ed pointed out that back in 2019, there was battery energy storage, green energy storage in 500 megawatts, growing to 13,300 today, but the goal is 52,000 megawatts by 2045. And so that's where all of us are watching. One, the technology has evolved just in the five years, as you pointed out. The batteries that were involved in the fire were lithium, cobalt, magnesium, nickel, where now I think they've transitioned to lithium ion phosphate, safer, better technology. But it just shows a lot is moving there. But at the same time, there are projects that are in play already. They've been in the process already in other parts of California, and that's where the paradox is, right? Citing these, safety, but also recognition that these are an important part if we're going to meet our goals to reduce carbon emissions and have cleaner energy in the state of California. So I just wanted to point that out, and I think focus on legislation this coming year, that you're proposing to focus on safety and using the best technology available. But the part that's also missing is the cleanup when these happen, right? Because these damaged batteries have energy, they pose a risk even removing them, not only for these energy facilities, but even, I was reading articles in LA Times about the Palisades Fire and other, just the batteries, the cars that burned, they're kind of dangerous to move in the cleanup process. So there's a lot of lessons to be learned that I think we got to make sure our safety protocols and our laws are aligned to deal with these new challenges with these new technologies as well. So I want to acknowledge your work, but we look forward to seeing the different bills that will be introduced to address this. And I know the industry itself is, and labor even, is really focused on wanting to bring in safer policies and protocols and statutes to hopefully make it safer, but also avoid, if all possible, any such fires in the future as well.
Supervisor Askew?
Just wanted to thank you, Dominic, in the Speaker's office, for calling out housing specifically. I didn't get a chance to say that, and it wasn't, I don't think, highlighted in our presentation, but housing homelessness, the housing instability of our residents, I think we all know, remains probably one of the biggest, most existential threats to the stability of our workforce moving forward and maintaining the ability for that. There's, I think, I've heard Kate use the term attainable housing, so with that in-between of like, what our subsidy is affordable, and then we have our market rate. But housing that our workforce can afford is really this existential threat to being able to hire teachers and just workforce locally. So I appreciate you calling that out specifically, and I just wanted to validate that statement. Thank you.
Any responses, Senator Laird?
No, I was just going to say, whenever somebody regurgitates your op-ed, you should say, "Well done." But I just appreciate that, and I think that we met with the West, the Senate Democratic Caucus met with the West Coast FEMA Director on Wednesday, who highlighted what they're finding in every individual house in Los Angeles in the cleanup. And there's an incredible number of batteries and things in a way that it has the potential of delaying the cleanup, and we have to have standards and we have to have protocols. And I think that that's one of the big issues about Moss Landing. So thank you.
I want to also call out the housing. Thank you, Dominic, for elevating that. I know we've worked together on some really big projects like the EAH housing, which will open its doors here this fall for the community down in Greenfield. And when we look at growth, the Salinas Valley is that place that everybody's saying that's where it needs to go. And so as we bring those solutions to bear, I just want to thank the Speaker for his partnership since the beginning on making sure that we invest in that housing and do it the right way, including our farm, our farming community who has done it themselves in many instances, building the housing that has helped alleviate the pressure on so many of our communities. And with that, I want to open this up to the public. I know we've had quite a few folks who've shared time with us today, and so I want to give them the opportunity to share comments. to give them the opportunity to share comments with us. We're going to allow 90 seconds, a minute and a half per Speaker, will come forward. I see Norm coming forward in room, and we'll, we'll start. Got you.
Now it's on. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you to our Supervisors and our elected officials for being here today. We really appreciate the informative session that this has been so far. First, I want to say, wow, what a wake-up call we had in January, and I think we've all learned a whole lot more about lithium ion than we really ever wanted to learn. But I think that demonstrates that this community can come together to find a solution to make that work and have a response plan in place when we need it. The other part of this, excuse me, I'm also got the same thing that's going around. The other part of this is that this highlights what's happening out of Washington, DC, really highlights the failure of our immigration policy on a national level. Farm Bureau has been involved for over a quarter of a century, trying to get something done on a federal level to improve not only a guest worker program or a temporary worker program that is workable for agriculture, but also documentation for those who are here, and really illustrates the fact that the inactivity in Washington, DC has gotten us to this point. So it's a simple solution. Let's get something passed in Washington, DC that makes sense, helps all, all those who are already in our communities, but also helps agriculture, hospitality, and everybody else who depends on this immigrant labor year in and year out. So thank you all again today for the comments, and we appreciate the efforts putting this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Anyone else in room? All right, let's look to Zoom, see if we have any hands up. We invite folks to use a race, hand function, star nine via landline in order to be recognized. Okay, Supervisor LaHose?
I just, there were some mothers who are, who were waiting to speak, but they had to leave. I'll just summarize, they had some statements prepared there from Mamas de Salinas Abogan, mothers, women advocacy, advocacy group, Maria Sanchez, who's a mother of six, and also Maria Para, a mother of four. They just wanted to come and advocate in front of their legislators, to ask them to continue to support affordable, accessible childcare for our community, and recognize how important that is to make sure that we continue that for working parents.
Thank you, Supervisor, and Mamas de Salinas Abogan are clear partners with CCAN and the Central Coast Early Access Network for our children. I want to thank them for being here today to give their voice to the issues directly. Access to childcare in our communities is a major hurdle. I know that we're often hear numbers quoted about homelessness in our community under the McKinney-Vento definition, and earlier today, I had the chance to review the statistics for Gonzales specifically, and 20% of that community is homeless by the McKinney-Vento definition. 100% of those children who are in schools, who are homeless, are living with other families. Right, so as we continue to advocate for broadband as well, which has been on our list, that's the reason I was reviewing those figures. We're told 25 over three in terms of speed is adequate for our communities, but when you have two to three families living in a household, those speeds quickly deteriorate when you have as many devices as those kids need to complete their schoolwork and do the things that they need to do. So we're continuing to advocate with our partner, Golden State Connect Authority, with the South Salinas Valley Broadband Authority, to push for adoption of our project. We're one of the last two counties in the state that's not yet had an award, and even though the two little girls sitting outside of Taco Bell were the spark that launched a thousand, if not a million connections in the state of California, their home county is the last one waiting for an answer. So we'll continue to push on that, but I want to thank everybody for their advocacy on those efforts as well. Any final thoughts from the dais before we conclude today?
You know, no, thank you for that, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to highlight one thing you just mentioned. One of the things I know the, the state and federal delegation have really worked hard on is taking your thoughts, potentially taking the realities that we face here in rural communities. It's been difficult sometimes for folks in Sacramento, in Washington, DC, to just understand how compacted people's lives can be in a place where so many wide-open spaces are seen. The fact that this county was the first to have a farmworker housing study, the fact that data is so clear in just how drastic the overcrowded conditions people are living in, and so the Speaker and his policy team have certainly appreciated having comments like that, continued advocacy to take that to stakeholders in Sacramento, to let them know, yes, we are not millions like a San Francisco or Los Angeles, but even in a city of 20, 30,000, we can very much be overcrowded. And so it's, it's incredibly important that we continue to advocate for these rural needs, and we certainly appreciate all your work done to establish a JPA in South Monterey County around broadband.
Thank you, Dominic. Kate?
I've gone back and forth about whether to jump into the battery storage conversation, but I just, I really want to say that, and it's just, it feels prudent to say, in, in terms of the options that were discussed today at the table, in terms of approaches, public safety, or, or addressing where battery storage can go, is that there's nothing more contaminating or cancer-causing to our children, to our families, to our, our environment in terms of environmental damage than the fossil fuel industry. And so to, and we still are sitting at a dais with plastic bottles, I'm sure my clothing has fossil fuels, like, you know, polyester in them, which is a petroleum-based product. We drive our cars to this meeting, and so I just really caution us to, to, to have the conversations about, you know, our reliance on fuels that are dangerous, and if we're not going to rely on them, and we're not going to allow them in our communities, where are they going to come from? And that is not expressing a, a desire to have best in Moss Landing or not have best, but we need to have a really realistic conversation about our reliance on petroleum and petroleum-based products, and what the alternatives are, and where they're going to come from if we don't allow them in the state of California. And I just, you know, really want us to remember to always think globally, because unless we're going to kick the habit, then we're going to need it to come from somewhere. Thank you.
All right, so as we conclude today, seeing nods at the dais, one piece, I did see some, a request here for any additional direction to staff, and I know I threw it out earlier, but I'm hoping we can give direction, just to have a letter sent to our federal delegation asking them to defend all funding streams that come into Monterey County. I have, I've had that discussion with a few of our members of Congress, who said that would be helpful. So if we can agree here, I know it's already kind of built into our platform, but doing it specifically would be helpful, so explicitly agreement? Anybody opposed? Then, all right, that direction has been given with, yeah, please.
To that point, I just, I've heard very positive feedback about the Monterey County Values statement in the pledge platform, and I've also heard people say, gosh, you know, you missed this and you missed that. So I just want to encourage anyone who sees things that we did miss, like, please let us know so that we can make sure we, we, this is our first attempt at putting those words on paper, and we want to make sure we're building that out in the future. So, but yes, absolutely, Supervisor Lopez, and thank you for taking that and getting that in writing. I think the more that we can be very clear about what our expectations are and what we need from our, our federal leaders, the, the better off we're all going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, deep appreciation to our delegation. I, I think that the conversation was robust, but we're largely already on the same team here in many ways. So thank you for being here today, for sharing space with us, and for allowing for the conversation, allowing us to talk at you for a while, and then talking back a little bit. We appreciate the partnership and look forward to continued partnership to make progress for all of Monterey County's residents. Thank you.